It appears I have all members online.
Okay, are we ready? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, let us begin. I'd like to call the meeting of the Sacramento City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll and establish court?
Councilmember Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Warren?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Al.
Mindy, I did say here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Chenier? I think Councilmember Chenier just dropped off. Councilmember Guerra?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Mayor Steinberg?
Here.
I mean, expect Councilmember Chenier momentarily.
All right, would everyone please rise? I'd like Councilmember Warren, please, to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
All right, here we go. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. We've got two items, three items actually, tonight. The first is an update on the commercial tenant eviction moratorium. Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
Mayor, before we start, can I remind members of the public that members of the public are encouraged to view council meetings and make electronic comments on our website. E-commerce and correspondence that have been received since the posting of the agenda have been delivered to our city council this afternoon and uploaded to the agenda on our website. E-commerce are still active, and any received after the distribution and posting of correspondence this afternoon will display during that agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mindy.
And for the record, Councilmember Chenier has joined us.
Okay. Welcome. So who is Mr. City Manager? Who's presenting on this, on the update on the commercial tenant eviction moratorium?
That's Danielle Foster, and she's online, and she's going to kick us off here.
Okay. Foster, welcome.
Hi, this is Danielle, your Housing Policy Manager. And actually, Tina's going to start us out first.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Danielle.
No, all good.
Sorry, Tina.
No problem. So, good evening. I'm Tina Leavout, I'm the Program Manager with the Community Development Department, and my staff supports the temporary moratorium on evictions for commercial as well as residential tenants. So tonight, I'm going to provide a review of the moratorium as well as present information that was shared with the P-bids and their members during two online meetings. So as you know, on March 24th, City Council established a temporary moratorium on evicting commercial tenants within the city of Sacramento. The moratorium is scheduled to end on May 31st in accordance with the governor's order. So the moratorium allows commercial tenants to delay rent payments. They have up to 120 days after the expiration of the governor's order to pay unpaid rent. So based on the May 31 expiration date, they would have until September 29th to pay any unpaid rent. Commercial tenants who are protected by the moratorium must have a loss of income due to the tenant's closure of operating restrictions placed upon or other loss of patronage of the tenant's businesses directly resulting from the government orders or declarations related to COVID-19. So it should be noted that if a tenant was already late in paying rent, they are not protected. To be protected by the ordinance, the tenant must first notify their landlord in writing prior to the day that rent is due that they're unable to pay the rent in full. They're required to provide documentation related to the loss of income, and this documentation can be a declaration that the business was closed to comply with the order or something that shows a loss in revenue. They have to pay a percentage of the rent owed based on the income that's available to them. And they had to provide that notice and documentation for each month that there's a delay in rent. If the tenant can't pay the rent fully within the 120-day period, the landlord can't evict the tenant. So since the ordinance was adopted, there have been some governor and court actions that we want to note. On March 27th, the governor issued an order to halt evictions of residential tenants who could not pay the rent due to the impacts by COVID-19 through the May 31 state of emergency. And on April 6th, the Judicial Council adopted temporary rules preventing evictions of residential or commercial tenants and foreclosure proceedings for 90 days after the state of emergency period ends. So based on that May 31 date, August 31st would be the earliest date that court proceedings could commence. Please note, this order does not establish any new tenant rights or defenses for an eviction. Also, because our ordinance is in place, we give people 120 days after the state of emergency is lifted to pay unpaid rent. So that gives them an additional 30 days after the court proceedings commence before a landlord can start the eviction process if the breach of the lease is based on unpaid rent. The landlord must still provide tenants with a three-day notice to pay or quit before they can start the eviction process. I want to note that since the ordinance was adopted, the Tenant Protection Program Office has received about 70 emails and phone calls from commercial tenants and landlords. Of those contacts, about seven folks said that landlords may not be compliant. So what we're doing is we're following up with the tenants to confirm whether or not the landlord was indeed not compliant. If they're not compliant, then we're going to follow it with some education and give them the opportunity to correct and cure the violation. And if they're still not compliant, then they're subject to administrative penalties. In closing, I really want to recognize the Tenant Protection Program staff, Vicky Reagans-Madinas, who's the program specialist, Amanda Arianoz, and Lisa Santana, who are customer service specialists. I want to recognize them because they're new to the program. All of them had less than 30 days of service with the program when they had to start working remotely, and they still continue to serve people. And Lisa and Vicky had only been with the city like a month. They've never even worked with the city. So I really wanted to recognize our staff for their good work. So then I want to go ahead and pass it on to Danielle.
Thank you.
Tina.
So Mayor and City Council, I just wanted to go over some of the outreach and the survey that was conducted as part of the 30-day update. So initially, we did outreach to all of our P-bids and our chambers and additionally to our Small Business List Serve, which is about 14,400 users right now. So we have a pretty wide span reach there. Additionally, we put together a webinar specific to the commercial tenant eviction moratorium, and Tina and I hosted that on April 14th along with Cheryl Patterson from our City Attorney's Office. That was recorded and posted online for anyone who wanted to access it. And then lastly, we posted the survey in multiple languages, and it was available from April 10th to the 20th. We received 315 responses, thanks to help from the P-bids and the chambers and getting the word out about that. That included 231 responses to our tenant survey and 84 responses to a landlord survey. We have seen a range of responses in both tenants and landlords. On the landlord's side, 39% of landlords reported not getting full payment of rents in April, and 20% reported getting full payments of rent in April. Both anticipate reductions in payments in May. 60% of landlords don't anticipate making any late payments on their mortgages. Some have had discussions with their banks and are getting forbearance. Some, 42%, hadn't yet had discussions with banks. In our city outreach towards banks, we've heard sort of a range of responses. Some of the larger banks seem to be doing forbearance until July 1 right now. Smaller banks are working one-on-one a lot with our local businesses and sort of everything in between. But we're waiting to see how things continue to evolve there. And then the last thing to highlight on the landlord's side, 51% reported not being able to come to an agreement on rent and repayment agreement with the tenants. Still early in the process, but it's definitely a communication issue that we want to highlight upfront because we're seeing it both on the tenant and the landlord's side. The tenants reported 67% not being able to come to an agreement with their landlord about rent payment. Additionally, on the tenant's side, 45% of tenants reported not being able to pay rent in April and anticipated that it would be even more difficult in May. And the majority of tenants that have received any type of assistance either through the Cities Program, Donate for Sacramento, or the PPP program are using at least a portion of that towards rent payments. But as we all know, those resources, there's not enough to go around. And while we are continuing to try to support our local businesses, we know that there's still a great need there for rent assistance and other types of assistance. So with the Paycheck Protection Program, initially, it started with the $350 billion. That got sent out fast, and a lot of applications were still waiting to be reviewed. An additional $310 billion. The application reopened this morning. It crashed because there was so much demand for it. So there's definitely a high demand for all of the assistance that's out there. With the initial round of the Paycheck Protection Program, only 3% of businesses nationally got assisted. So with this update, given the short nature of the program, it's linked to the Governor's Executive Order, which is currently set to expire at the end of May. If for any reason that would be extended for the stay-at-home-in-place, then the moratorium would be extended as well as the ordinance is currently written. But due to the short duration of the moratorium, staff is not recommending any changes. We are continuing to work on supporting communication between landlords and tenants and seeing what options there might be to continue and support that through mediation services or other types of services. And we are working and looking at state legislation to see what we can do at that level as well to support our local businesses and our tenants and landlords. Any changes to the ordinance would require us to draft written modifications and come back to council for implementation. And council may also want to let us know if you want any future check-ins should the extension of the executive order occur or if you want any information at the end of the moratorium. And with that, I will take any questions. Tina and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the thorough presentation. We have a number of members that want to speak or ask questions, starting with Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a fair amount of experience in this space, and I know a lot of people in this space. And what I'm hearing is that it's a disaster. The program is a disaster because it really does not keep the playing field level. Now, we know that this is a traumatic time, and there's a lot of pain going around. But I'm hearing from both large and small property owners that they're collecting 15, not percentages of tenants, but of their overall rent. They're collecting around 15% of their rent. And it's forcing them into some really stressful situations. I mean, and I'm talking about big developers, small developers, people who've spent a lifetime in Sacramento as opposed to the residential rental program, where even though we have this moratorium on, and I've talked to a number of those folks, they're collecting 95% of their rent for residential, 15% for commercial. And my concern, I have several concerns. One is we're putting these, we're creating adversaries in this space where tenants and landlords are going to have feelings that will not be able to overbe, some of them will not be able to overcome when this stuff is over with. Because people who can pay are not paying. National tenants, multinational tenants, some of them, I'm not saying all, but some are not paying. And if, most of you guys know people in the space. You can ask them, and for whatever proof they will share with you. And so it makes it hard for somebody that is a property owner when they have tenants that can pay. And if they would pay, they would be in better position to work with the people they can't pay. But now you're putting the burden on these corporate or these business owners. And some of these people are going to be out of business, yes. Some of them will not. Some of them will just walk. Or they'll basically say, what can you do about it? And if they get into litigation, that's going to be more money. And it's really creating a really adverse business environment. And so my ask to the council is that either tonight, or we have another session right away after you all go out to the market yourselves, talk to people, understand what's taking place, is that either we rescind this ordinance or we pause it for 45 days so that the lenders, the property owners, and the tenants can all work from a level playing field and come together. Now, let me just give you one example to, so you understand kind of where my reason is coming from on this. When you're, as a business owner, and I'm a business owner, even as a property owner, a residential property owner, if you go to a bank, if you went to a bank right now to ask them to modify your mortgage because you've been impacted, they're going to ask you for some things, some documents. They want to see that you really need the modification. So right now, we are allowing people this modification that we're forcing on to the landlords without any justification other than we know that the economic environment is tough. And so property owners, you have to have reserves. In your loan covenants, you have to keep reserves. And sometimes when they drop below a certain level, you have to then replenish. Or not, they can call the loan dude. Now, I'm not saying that's what's happening now, but it could happen. And but so if you're making them use all their reserves right now, at some point, these property owners that were healthy, strong, viable businesses are going to be so impacted that they will not be able to really maintain their businesses. And so all I'm suggesting is this. I think there is some relief and consideration that's needed. But it's not just needed for the tenants. It's also needed for property owners. And I think the banks and lenders need to come to the table, and they work collectively for 45 days, see if they can come to some solution. And then if not, we can do what we need to do, you know, as a collective body, in the best interest for the city. But I don't see the ordinance as it stands right now being in the best interest of the city. And what I see happening ultimately is a lot of these property owners, if they're going to be forced out of business, then you're going to have new startups coming in. Even if some of the ones who get this rent relief and then at the end of 90 days or 120 days, because the relationship is so adversarial, property owners not going to want to deal with them. They're not going to want to deal with them. And so it's going to force a whole new flushing of the business environment. And then new ones will ultimately come up at some point. But it's just another drag on our local economy, and it will hurt the city's tax revenue. And I think ultimately be a black eye for the city. So I think it's something we should consider. And I hope you, the council, will at least take the time to talk to people and understand where and how this is impacting our property. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Alan, you've given us something to think about and to research. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Just a short question. The state has a 90-day moratorium. We have 120-day moratorium. Does the county have a moratorium as well?
Can't hear.
I don't believe so. I don't believe that the county has a moratorium.
Is there any benefit to us aligning our moratorium with the state?
I think the challenge that we would face in terms of trying to align it with the state is that we couldn't go back and be retroactive for those folks who have already submitted a delay in rent payment for April. So what we would have is perhaps someone who would be delaying for both April and May. And then for their April rent, it would be due within 120 days. But for anything that was done after May, if we should adopt it at the next council meeting, then they would have a different date for that. So that's my understanding. I don't know if the attorney's office wants to weigh in, but that would be my understanding that we would have two different dates because we couldn't go back and impact those people that had already submitted their documents. And I also just wanted to make a clarifying point that since it ends currently May 31st, that's currently what we're kind of tied to. So unless the governor extends his order, it's my understanding that tenants would be required to begin paying rent in full on June 1st.
Okay. For tenants today, do they have to show any type of documentation to the landlord in order to participate?
Yeah, they're required to provide documentation. And what our office has been telling people that have contacted us is that they should really pay as much as they can because they have to pay it at the back end. So even if they should say, I'm just not going to pay anything, at the end of September, they're going to be on the hook for that full amount. So what we've been counseling people is if your income has been reduced by 50%, you should be paying 50% of the rent due so that you're not caught in that. So there is documentation, and that is required by the code. So people can't just say, hey, we're just not going to pay the rent. They need to submit the form, and they need to provide some kind of documentation showing not only a loss of income, but a loss of income that's related to the orders for COVID-19.
And who's the adjudicator? This.
Sorry?
Who's the adjudicator of that process?
That's one of the issues that that's a little bit of, kind of is up to working with the tenants and the landlord. So it's up to the tenants and the landlord to determine kind of what the documentation is.
Okay. I'm sorry, Alan, you wanted to say something?
That's okay. Well, no, if you don't mind, let's go around. Is there other members? I'll come back to Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Vice Mayor Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So Larry just pointed out the weakness of this ordinance. And Alan alluded to the adversarial relationships that can develop. The problem is there's no arbiter in the process. So we've created a policy that puts stress on potentially both parties who are in a relationship. It seems to me that the city, our best interest is to maintain that relationship between tenant and landlord and get people through a crisis. What's lacking here, I think, is mediation. You know, if you say to the tenant they have to provide this document, well, provide it to the landlord, and who's going to review it? Who's going to, you know, make a judgment whether or not this is actually, you know, up to snuff? That they have demonstrated that they are under financial duress and that this is an appropriate action for them to not pay rent, not pay full rent. And then to drill even deeper, at what percentage of rent are they capable of paying? There is no body to decide these things, hence the adversarial relationship to which Alan alludes. I suggest that the city, because we created this ordinance, should we decide to pursue it into the future, that we pay for mediation services for these relationships between landlord and tenant. So we have an arbiter about whether or not this is actually working well for both parties. You know, it's obviously in the best interest of landlords to keep their tenants. The tenants want to get back into business and start making some money. And we really should not be in the middle creating stress. And for me, the way forward is to provide mediation services, which would be, I think, an excellent use of the CARES Act money, by the way. So, you know, I think tenants do need relief. But all we've done is run the responsibility up the flagpole, if you will, to the landlords. And then they can take the next step and put it on the doorstep of their creditors. And then they can go to major banks or their funding sources. You know, there may be money lost somewhere in here. But I think that if we had mediation services but I think that if we had mediation services, the problem that Alan pointed out is one that we could avoid. And, you know, that we could move forward for another, while until the governor's order has run its course and ended, we would have something to work with moving forward. So those are my thoughts. I would like to say, as far as direction, I think we should have a report back every month on this to see where we're at. But in the meantime, I would ask that staff bring back to us what it would cost to acquire the services of like SAC Mediation Center or maybe McGeorge, one way or another, to solve this conundrum. That's it, Mayor.
Good. Thank you. I think that's a constructive suggestion, no matter what we do here, to try to bring in mediation. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the comments of our council colleagues. I would just point out, since Jeff brought it up, that we do have some internal resources that could be used through our hearing officers if we needed to do that, I don't know what their capacity is. But I just want to bring us back to the reason that we started this process. And, you know, it's easy to acknowledge that this was maybe a over-inclusive ordinance from the standpoint of the crisis that we're responding to. What we were seeing is essentially the collapse of virtually all of our retail restaurant businesses, including many others that may rent space as office tenants. And what we were trying to do to most of those folks is give them some hope that when we got through this, they could have a chance to survive. I don't think we were trying to do more than that. We were trying to sort of put a pause on the situation. So many of those folks have put their entire life savings on the line. They're trying to figure out how to play, pay employees, how to pay vendors, how to do so many things. And what we were just trying to do is get them through this gulf of the coronavirus stay-at-home order until they could get up and running. And I'll tell you, I've heard from many tenants who found this program beneficial to them. It gave them an opportunity to have a constructive conversation with their landlord. But it also, for the landlords that didn't care about our ordinance, insisted that they drain their bank accounts, not pay employees in order to pay rent, that it gave them a chance to have a conversation that said, no, the city passes ordinance. Tina, and I give you credit to you and your team. You've done a lot of really wonderful work educating parties about this. Gives us a chance to do exactly what Jeff and others were saying, is to have a constructive conversation. And to equalize the power balance, usually the landlords have much more power than the tenants. And we have some really great landlords. They're working with tenants, I've heard, right from the get-go to reduce payments, to extend the term, to maybe suspend rent payments for a couple months, three months, and add that on to the end of the term. We also have some folks who don't want to do that. They don't really care what the economic circumstances are, and they want their payment. And that, you know, unless there's a policy that stops them, is their right. And that's what this policy is. It probably is in need of some refinement. And I do think that there is a way to logically refine it if we want to narrow it to businesses that have less than two hundred and fifty employees, that maybe have a multi-jurisdictional presence with more than four or five locations, have access to capital, you know, are publicly traded companies, for instance. I think those are all ways to narrow it. But in the end, it's appeared victory to repeal an ordinance that is meant to give people a little bit of comfort and hope if thirty to forty percent of those businesses are gone when we come out of this. And this is something that caused those business owners to walk away because they can't see any path out of this crisis for themselves. And they just throw in the towel. We do not want them to throw in the towel. We want them to try to thrive, come back, rehire those employees. And, you know, so to the extent that we come back at any point to refine it, I'd be comfortable with narrowly, more narrowly tailoring it, but not repealing because we have, particularly in the central city, and I'll just say this, you all know it, our visitor economy has been put into a coma. The hundred thousand employees that come in to work in the central city on a daily basis, they're not coming. The entertainment, restaurant spaces, the bars and nightclubs, the sports things that normally would happen, those are all gone. And so much of my district, our city's economic engine here in the central city, is dependent on people coming in from other places. That this is one of the few things we can do that doesn't cost us as a city money, but gives all of those businesses that we've worked so hard to help nourish and support through programs like our Creative Economy Grants or our Farm to Fork programs. You know, those restaurateurs, they were already dealing with thin margins. And we have the potential by repealing this to send the opposite message of what I think is the reason that we even created it, is just to give them hope. And so I would just strongly caution us about going too far.
Thank you very much. Councilman Chenier?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of points. And I agree with both of my colleagues who have spoken before me. I mean, there was a reason we did this. Had we had a couple of months to think about it, we might have done it differently. We might have separated office space from retail commercial on ground floor. We might have done different things for different people, depending on the number of employees they had or their annual revenues. But I think there was really an imperative to act. And I want to thank Tina, Danielle, and Tina, your whole crew. I mean, getting a program up and running this quickly is great. I think that this is not, this is not an action item before us, obviously. And if we do nothing, it will expire May thirty-first, correct? So I think we let it run its course. I like Jeff's idea, and we talked about that with staff, of bringing some more mediation services in to see if we can help out. But I think there was a reason for this. I would not extend it beyond that, even if the economy doesn't, does improve, because I think that it will put tenants in a position of being so far behind that I don't know that they would ever be able to catch up. And you would see bankruptcies from that end of the piece as well. So for me, thirty days, let's see where we are again. I think that's smart to do. More education, Tina, I know you're doing that as well. Bring in some facilitation, if people want voluntary facilitation or mediation, if people want to take advantage of that, I think that would be important. I can't imagine that's not something we could pay, use some of the stimulus money for and see how it goes from there. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't change up what we're doing right now. We set a course. I think we need to play that out.
We've got a month to go, but it's pretty clear, at least from the comments, that if there is any consideration of going beyond May thirty-first, the council is going to want to, at a minimum, modify this. I have a couple of questions. This confusion, if it is confusion from some tenants who may believe incorrectly that they don't have to pay the rent on the back end, is there anything more we can do about that in terms of public education? Because if, if there is a genuine misunderstanding and somebody knows that they're eventually going to have to pay the rent, they might be more likely to pay whatever they can or some now to avoid that big balloon payment at the end. Is the word out there that this is not a waiver and just a delay? And if not, what can we do to improve that?
The people that contact our office, we're very, very clear in the emails that we send and the information and the FAQs and the webinar. But again, that's based on the people that contact our office. We could continue to work and be more proactive in terms of making sure people understand that it's a relief. Very clear on the form that it's a delay in the rent payment, so that the form clearly states it's a delay, it's not a relief, it's not that you get it for free. So I think it's just, we can continue to do outreach. But I know our staff is very, very clear when we talk to them because we're concerned and we really want to focus on the mediation aspect because we know come September, when people are coming up and being due, we're going to get calls from people that may be challenged with that. So the fact if we could have some mediation services to help at that back end would be useful as well. But we've been really trying to, for folks who contact us, be very clear about what it is. But we can continue to be even more aggressive and trying to make sure we get the word out so that the tenants, as well as landlords, know that it's not something where people could think that they're getting the rent for free. In addition, we'll make sure people understand they have to document it because it's a concern for us if people think they can simply turn in the form and not support and not provide the supporting documentation to their landlords because landlords do have a right to expect that documentation if someone's going to ask for that relief.
Do we have current reports of banks foreclosing on commercial property owners who aren't getting their monthly rent payments? Is that something we're hearing about?
We have not heard anything in that regard. We'll continue to monitor what the banks are doing, but I haven't heard of any foreclosures, no. And just to supplement what Tina was talking about on the proactive education side, we could do a mail or an email to our fourteen thousand-plus small businesses that just focuses on maybe those two or three, you still have to pay rent, and just goes to the end of the term, and documentation piece, just to highlight that even more.
See, good.
Let me say, it's too early for foreclosures as it relates to the COVID. I mean, if people are getting foreclosed on, that means they had problems even before that. So this would not be a foreclosure issue. Right now, it's just, it's balanced. You know, the playing field is uneven. And I think we help create an environment where everybody shares a little bit as opposed to one party sharing disproportionately the amount of the burden. And it allows them to come out of this with a relationship that's respectful and allows them potentially to go forward.
Okay, well.
Mayor, can I comment really quick?
Please.
I just wanted to say I agree with Jay. Let it run its course and then, you know, not re-up it unless we take another look at it and figure out some different parameters. Because it's, anything we would do now in terms of implementation wouldn't happen fast enough anyway. So, yeah, I would, I guess I agree with my colleagues there on that one. And then I just wanted to take a minute to thank Tina. Because Tina, we've had a lot of calls to our office, both on this and the other parts of the program, that we have all sort of punted to you over the last couple of weeks. And you've just done a really great job. Danielle, I'm sure you've been helping her a lot. We sent everybody to Tina, and we've gotten so many calls back saying that they felt better about what they thought. So some of these things that people are asking, like misconceptions that folks have, I know that once they talk to you, Tina, that they feel much better about what's happening. And so thank you for that, Danielle, thank you for your support of that too. But Tina, in particular, the folks you've spoken to have all reached back out to say how grateful they were to talk to you and for your expertise. So as always, you, you know, you make us look so good, and I appreciate you, Tina. Thank you very much.
Good, good comment. Thank you, Tina.
Thanks to my staff, because they're pretty awesome.
And a big shout out to the economic development staff who worked hard on the surveys and the data, and I think have been a great partner of TDD on this. So thank you, Danielle, Leslie, Michael, all of those folks who worked on it.
Did you get sufficient input here to be able to consider next steps? Certainly as May thirty-first is around the corner.
Absolutely. We'll continue to gather data and come back in thirty days with an update. If anything changes with the governor's order, we were hearing that there's a discussion on the ordinance and that there's definitely some support to ending at the end of the month. So we're hearing that. We'll continue to monitor the governor's orders and the impacts on the community.
Okay. Cindy tells me, yes, a public comment came in at five forty-one. So why don't we hear what that public comment was?
I have received only one public comment since the meeting started. You did receive a letter this afternoon from the Midtown Association, which was distributed to council and uploaded to our website.
Okay, everyone have a chance to look at that comment? Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. More to come.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item two, which is the Emergency Bridge Housing Initiative. Is Michelle Dozier here?
Yes, I'm here.
You are here. Michelle, if I might just make an opening comment on this because it might shorten the hearing, but then I want you to please give the council a summary of the project and where it's at as well. As you know, last week and a couple of weeks earlier, I expressed some concern, not about the project itself, which I think is a wonderful project, but about whether or not we should continue to invest the HAP funding in this particular project, or whether we should hold on to it because of the COVID crisis and the opportunity and obligation potentially to rehouse up to a thousand or more people through the motel operation, Turnkey Program and the trailer program. And so I heard the input last week from some members. I've also thought a lot about it. And for me, I've come to the conclusion that we always find a way to raise the money that is necessary to take the next step. And I am confident that in partnership with our county, the state of California, the reimbursable, the fact that the Operation Turnkey Project, some of it is federally reimbursable, that we in fact are going to have money, and we're going to find money to rapidly rehouse people through this new opportunity that is presented to us. And I know next week, Michelle and the agency, our housing authority, together with our housing department, are going to co-present a report, a set of recommendations and options on the rehousing. All that being said, I am comfortable going forward and recommend to my colleagues that we go forward with the Grove Avenue project. I know everyone has worked very hard on it. And the population that we seek to serve is a very needy and worthy population. And this will just add to our variety of important approaches, together with WX, Meadowview, Capital Park Hotel, what we're doing with Operation Turnkey. We will continue to lead and to make a real impact on this problem. So I am, I'm good. I'd be an a-vote today. I thank Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Ashby, the other members who have all weighed in on this, and I'm ready to go.
I'd like to. Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank you for, I just want to thank you for your timely consideration and the support. You know, as you know, these projects are not easy to do anywhere. You know, you get a lot of community people involved. And in this particular case, we have a very kind-hearted person, a pastor, who stepped up. And I think he's going to be really happy about it. I want to thank, in addition to thanking you for your leadership on this, but also Mayor Pro Tim Ashby, who was a dogged fighter as well for causes like this. And the rest of my colleagues who maybe I had not heard from, but, you know, I think this is important. And particularly, you know, things are extra sensitive when they're in your district. And when you've, when you've come to a place, you kind of want to see it through. And this does help us reach our objective, Mr. Mayor, for having, I know you, Councilman Hanson, and others said, you know, we got temporary stuff going on, but we need ultimately more permanent housing for folks, and this will help to be some of that additional permanent housing. So thank you very much.
Alan, is that a motion? Or do we need a motion?
Yeah, do I need to close public comment and move the item?
The item is receive and provide direction.
So we had already voted on it. I know we had asked to have it come back this week. So what do we need to do in order to take the brakes off of Michelle and let her get going full steam ahead?
I would say give her a motion with the direction.
Okay, well, then I'd like to make the motion for Michelle to move full steam ahead and, you know, whatever else we need to do to help support her, then I would include it in this motion. But if that's good enough, that's my motion.
And I'm happy to second it, but I also want to thank the mayor. You know, because, Mayor, I know you're trying to do so many things. And I really appreciate that you took the time to work through this and And I know this is a big priority for you. This project is one of your babies. And I think ultimately, it's a great idea. And we're all gonna, it'll be something we can all be really proud of. So thank you, Mayor, for doing that.
Thank you. We will all be proud of this. This is one of our main missions here. We're just gonna need to raise more money, but we will. We do have, is there anybody else in the council?
Do we need to vote? Do we need to vote on this?
Hold on, hold on one second. Because I got, I got some public comment, right? Madam Clerk?
Yes, I do have public comments. A report was distributed this afternoon, but I received five comments since the posting of that report. And you can view those now.
Okay. Yep. A burden to hand is really what the, what the public is saying. Don't delay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. All right. Unanimous. Can't wait. Thank you. Are there council comments? No, we do have the review of the local emergency declaration. City manager?
Mayor, council, my recommendation remains the same, to continue this local emergency declaration, particularly in light of the county extending theirs potentially as early as this week. But I would like to have Daniel Bowers, our Director of Emergency Management, provide just a very brief update, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
Daniel?
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council. Just to provide a quick update across the board, we've seen a transition into some of our resource requests to really helping to build partner capacity and stabilize and fortify organizations that are providing support and in the form of meals and isolation capability to our elderly and at-risk persons. So I really applaud your support and participation with that through your council offices.